I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We're going to convene as a zoning and land use commission. We will have the prayer by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. Rogers.
We thank God today for his grace. We thank him for his mercy. And Lord, as we assemble in your presence for the purpose of deliberating on the interests of Terrebonne Parish, we hope and pray what we say and do is beneficial for our community. And Lord, as we face June 1, 2023, we ask and plead for your protection of our community. These and other blessings, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Justice for all. Becky, roll call, please.
Mr. Ross Burgard?
Here.
Ms. Rachel Ellander? Mr. Kyle Falk?
Here.
Reverend Corion Gray? Mr. Robbie Liner?
Here.
Mr. Dan Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Trevion Smith? Mr. Barry Sudier? Mr. Wayne Thibodeau? We have a quorum.
Thank you, Becky. Conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that at any time tonight, a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself for participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the Zone and Land Use Commission of the regular meeting of April 20th, 2023. I have a motion by Mr. Falk and a second by Mr. Rogers. All approve, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes. Communications?
No communications, sir.
All right, public hearing. F, rezoning from R1, single-family residential to R3, multifamily residential. 122 Bank Avenue, Lot 41, Block B, Mechanicville. Freddie Johnson is the applicant. Someone here to, uh, yes, sir? You could come up? It's old business, is that correct? Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry. I just seen new business. Say your name and your address, please, sir.
Freddie Johnson. My address is 212 Ashland Drive.
Okay, and what are you looking to do? Can you tell us a little bit about it?
I'm looking to try to relocate from Hurricane Ida to 122 Banks Avenue. I'm trying to put a home there, and I need to get it zoned.
Okay. A rezone, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. If you just want to step to the side just for one second? Anybody in the public want to discuss this matter? Going once, public? Twice, public? Three times, public? A motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Bulgard. All approved, aye. All oppose, nay. Close to the public. If you want to step back up, sir? Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multifamily residential for the purpose of placing a mobile home on the property. The area of Mechanicville subdivision is mainly R1, but there are several lots that are zoned R2 and R3, and many of these have mobile homes on them. Additionally, several of the R1 lots have mobile homes that are legal non-conforming. In recent years, property owners have come to the Zoning and Land Use Commission to request rezoning to R3 in order to place mobile homes. In December 2020, a proposed rezon for numerous lots in Mechanicville from R1 to R2 was presented to the Zoning and Land Use Commission, but was recommended for denial after public comment. It was decided at that time to continue to review rezon requests on a case-by-case basis. The zoning error states, "In order to rezone property, one of the following conditions must apply: error, change in conditions, increase in need for sites for business or industry, or subdivision of land." The applicant and staff agree that the application fits under Item 2, "Change in conditions" due to the increasing need for affordable housing in the area. However, the subject property does not abut or touch corners with an existing R3 zoning district, nor does it meet the minimum size requirement of five acres to request a rezone to R3. All public notice requirements have been met, and staff received three calls requesting more information. Staff recommends denial of the rezone request from R1 to R3 due to the property not meeting the minimum size requirement as per Section 28, 201B1A.
Okay. Thank you, administration. Commissioners, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. Thank, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And here we are again, right?
Same street.
Matter of fact, I think the last month, the April meeting, there was the same recommendation for undersized lot to do what this man is asking us to do tonight. May I ask him a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, yes, sir.
Are you planning to move there?
Yes, sir, the property is in my name, yes, sir.
Are you planning to move there?
Yes, sir.
Mr., uh, I mean, the director? I would, I would, I would ask that perhaps, we have a new councilman now, Mr. Pleasure, Councilman Pleasure. Maybe we can write a letter to him, or you can have a conversation with him to see what his position is on this continued request to, you know, to change from R1 to R3, and perhaps he has an idea of what to do about it. You know, we, we granted this same request last meeting, and I'm inclined to offer a motion that we do the same for this gentleman.
Did we do R2 last time, or we did R3?
No, we did the R3, I believe.
Okay, okay.
It was R3, and one of the differences was it was corner to corner.
Right.
Yeah, because it was a, I had no touch.
So we had a conversation, and that's why I included the bit in here about doesn't abut or touch corners.
Gotcha.
So we had a discussion about, well, you know, corner to corner, it's some minute point. It's touching.
Right.
It's just a point.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, then could I withdraw that motion? I didn't get a second, so perhaps we can continue this matter on the agenda, and, and, and the director would have a chance to have some conversation with the new councilperson for that district and see what, what he wants to do, or what he thinks about us. And, and Mr. Plank is correct, we, we did have some touching of that lot last month, so that gave us a little, a little room to do what we did. So if it's okay with the commissioners, I'd like to offer a motion that we continue the matter until the June meeting.
Well, my, my thoughts are, it's down the same street. I mean...
But, but a couple of months before that, we had one on Banks, because it's going up for, or just went to the council last week.
Right, but that one was the button, like, right next to it.
Yeah, it was, it was an expansion. I think it was, yeah, the 200 block or something.
139.
Yeah.
Just my opinion, Mr. Thibodeau. I mean, I would like to make the same move we made last month and just let him, because I don't want to hold him up.
Thank you.
That's fine, you know, so... Well, go ahead, on the record.
One question I have, the three calls that were received requesting more information, was anyone against it, or what was their concerns?
Becky, you, you took the calls, right?
One call was against it, and then after speaking to the applicant, she called back to take back her opposition and said she was for it. And the other two calls were just for more information.
Mr. Johnson, you, you've lived at that location?
I was born and raised at 114 Bank Street, which is my mother's property.
That's not Lloyd Johnson.
Yeah, that was my dad, yeah, that was my father. I was born and raised at 114 Bank Street.
I know your family quite well.
So 122 is an empty lot. I've been there all my life, right there in Mechanicville. Yes, sir.
All right, I think we put it out there, so a motion, we had an option of a motion to table and an option of motion to, no, we didn't have a motion to, um, to do what we did last month.
Motion to continue.
Okay, so we got to vote on the motion to table?
Continue.
Continue to next one. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau and a second by Mr. Falk to table it. All approved.
To continue.
To continue, I'm sorry, to continue. All approved, aye. Any, any nays? So motion, one nay. So motion passes.
Well, Dan, can you just explain that?
So it's going to continue on, and I don't really know where we go from here, what's the process?
The next meeting is June 15th.
So it's going to, straight to the, to the council from here?
No, it's coming back to you guys next month. In the in-between, though, I'm gonna go speak to Councilman Pleasure to talk to him about his thoughts and feelings for the area, and then we'll see, I mean...
He can shine some more light on a recommendation for...
Okay, so unfortunately, you're gonna have to come back next month.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
You, you, you're not in the, in the middle of a purchased agreement or a transaction where you may lose the mobile home or whatever you're planning? I mean, you, where are you with that?
I have a certain period of time to put a mobile home on the lot. Yeah, I already got the funds and everything. They give me a window to get it there.
All right, that, that's my fear.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it there, yeah.
Well, you, I would ask that you hopefully can have a conversation with the seller if that's still available, and, and just let him know that the account, the conditions have kind of postponed it for 30 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so what date I have to return now?
June 15th. He'll get a letter? No. June, June 15th.
June 15th, okay, thank you, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing number two, rezoning from R1, single-family residential, to R3, multifamily residential townhouse. It's 108 and 110 Marcel Lane, track A, B, C, D, A. John Stevens is the applicant. Yes, sir?
Ken Rembert, representing this project, Mr. Stevens and Mr. Gold. Mr. Gold would like to put in a few duplexes right on this property, and we're attempting to get it rezoned, so he can do that. It's, uh, it's, I think, a little overgrown, and, and it's been idle for years. I think maybe a house on each end at one time, and they would like to put it into commerce and have some nice duplexes. I think about four or five of them along there is probably the count. And we're here to ask that we could get it rezoned from R1 to R3. It'll still be residential.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'll open it up to the public if you just want to step to the side for a second on this matter, going once, public? Going twice, public? Three times, public? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Falk, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposal to rezone from R1 to R3M for the purpose of placing duplexes on the property. The zoning ordinance states, "In order to rezone property, one of the following conditions must apply: error, change in conditions, increase in need for sites for business or industry, or subdivision of land." Applicant and staff agree, application fits under Item 2, "Change in conditions" due to the increasing need for affordable housing in the area, especially after Hurricane Ida. The subject property fronts Main Street, where most lots are typically zoned commercial. This project will provide much-needed rental property for parish residents whose homes have been destroyed or damaged by Hurricane Ida. All public notice requirements have been met, and staff receive no calls. Staff recommends approval from R1 to R3M.
Thank you, administration. Commissioners, Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, if, if I could ask, why didn't we, 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 instead of 3M, why didn't we do R2M, which allows duplex?
Well, R3M is dup, uh, townhomes, which I know the developer has done several townhome developments in the past. The, the biggest difference, really, because of the size of the property, we didn't want to just limit it to two, you know, two dup, two units, you know? I mean, that's a big lot, so he could put in more. I mean, he's doing duplexes, but it's multiple duplexes. You see what I'm saying?
Okay.
So...
But, but, of course, we didn't, we didn't get any objection letters, so I guess the fear of something more happening beyond this land spot is not present, I guess, for the people in the community, since nobody objected.
Yeah, and also, R3M, you know, what's the difference between R3 and R3M? Really, there isn't much except for the building height. The building height max in R3M is 35, and R3 is 45. But it's specifically intended to be for townhome-type developments, and a duplex is certainly a permitted use.
Mr. Bulgard?
Yes, so on this Marcel Lane, with this change, would they be able to have any entry points coming from Main Street? Or they would still have to have all of it coming from Marcel?
All the, on the development plan that the applicant provided, all the driveways are coming off of Marcel Lane. I think they would have, it would be impossible to get a driveway permit from DOTD to put a driveway at that location that close to Marcel Lane. If Marcel Lane wasn't there, then yeah, obviously, they can't deny him access to their property, but I don't think the DOTD rules would let, would allow for a driveway off of Main.
Very good.
I'd like to move that we approve as per staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bulgard. All approved, aye. All oppose, nay.
Let's be clear that y'all are not the final sayers. Have to follow the Terrebonne Parish Council for final considerations. Y'all are only making that recommendation.
I got it.
Yep.
I have a motion for a recommendation by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bulgard. All approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, G, new business, parking plan, construction of 60 parking spaces, 140 Liberty Drive, South Louisiana Wetlands Discovery Center. Yes, sir, name and address.
David Waite, 7839 Park Avenue. Representing the South Louisiana Wetlands Discovery Center. What we're proposing is a parking lot between Balhigh Boulevard and Library Drive, which is behind the Civic Center, directly behind the Marriott Hotel, and we're asking for parking plan approval.
Yes, sir. We'll open it up to the public. Going once, public on this matter. Going twice, public on this matter. Three times, public. I have a motion by Mr. Falk and a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. Close to the public. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting review and approval of a 60-space parking plan associated with the South Louisiana Wetlands Discovery Center. Sections 28, 136 of the Parish zoning regulation states, "Any proposed parking lot consisting of 50 or more spaces shall receive parking plan approval by the Zoning and Land Use Commission." The access to the site is off of Library Drive and Civic Center Boulevard. The parking lot configuration and layout provide for adequate vehicular and pedestrian circulation, as well as emergency vehicle access. A site visit was performed, and adjacent property owners have been notified. Staff did not receive any calls about the application. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, administration. Mr. Falk?
Mr. Waite, I've just got one question. You don't know when that project's gonna be finished.
The parking lot?
The, the whole thing.
No.
I'm just curious.
They got multiple phases of it, and I understand it's getting ready to be another phase. Getting ready to start after the parking lot.
Fifty phases, but, uh, I'm, just, just out of curiosity.
They are seeking donations, so if you'd like to donate, you can speed it up a little bit.
I didn't know what the problem was. Maybe it was the parking lot. Anyway, I would like to offer a motion, as per staff recommendation, for the parking plan application.
I have a motion by Mr. Falk and a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, number two, new business, rezoning of open land to an R1, single-family residential to R1, single-family residential, 773 East Woodland Ranch Road, Lot 13, Block 2, Woodland Ranch Road Acres. Number three, Leslie Marie is the applicant. Is someone here to represent?
Were you just calling for a public hearing for the June date?
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move that motion, call a public hearing on June 15th.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bulgard. All approved, aye. All oppose, nay. Motion passes. Staff report?
Uh, no report, sir.
Commissioner comments? Public comments? A motion to adjourn?
So move?
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers and a second by Mr. Bulgard, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes.
Recommendation that it passes through the council, that we had already gave it an approval.
No, but y'all, y'all asked him if he was living there, and he...
But he said he was going to.
It's his nephew that's living there, not him.
That, oh, really?
That's what he told you. He owns the property.
He made it sound like he was the one that was moving there.
Well, that's, that's the question that he was asked, and that was his answer. So maybe, maybe he changed his mind.
But he could have went without recommendation, is what I was saying. That's where I was at. And still, they get the last word.
Not really.
So that's why I went.
But, uh, Wayne's right, I mean, we need to check in with him.
Correct. Right, right. Yes, ma'am. All right, this time we will convene as the Regional Planning Commission. We will have the prayer once again by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. Falk.
Again, we thank God for this assembly. We thank him for his grace, we thank him for his mercy. And Lord, we ask, as we deliberate on the business of Terrebonne Parish, that you bless us and provide wisdom, so we can deliberate and make the proper decision. And Lord, as we approach January, June 1st, 2023, which is the official start of Hurricane Phoebe, we plead for your mercy and protection. These and other blessings, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Becky, roll call, please.
Mr. Burgard?
Here.
Ms. Ellander? Mr. Falk?
Here.
Reverend Gray? Mr. Liner?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Sudier? Mr. Thibodeau? We have a quorum.
Thank you, Becky. Conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that at any time tonight, a conflict of interest exists, arises, or is recognized, as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself, herself for participating in debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Thank you. All right, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the Home and Thibodeau Region Planning Commission minutes for regular meeting, April 20th. I have a motion by Mr. Falk and a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. Mr. Rogers, if you could do E, please. Oh, I got you.
I should go ahead and make a motion to approve the remittance payments for the May...
For the May 18th, 2023 invoices and treasure report of April 2023.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes. Communications, administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one, pertains to Item G1. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a request to table the above item at tonight's meeting and place it on the agenda for the meeting of June 15th. Thank you sincerely, Kenneth L. Rembert.
Okay.
So G1, first one. Table as per the developer's request.
Okay. G2.
No.
Oh, you got a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm skipping it. Go ahead, I need a motion to table it as per developer's request. Sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Second by Mr. Bulgard, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes. All right, G2. Lot 1 through, property belonging to Mr. Kirchhoff, land number 3, LLC.
Yes, Ken Rembert, representing Kirchhoff family. This property is located on, by Little Caillou, perhaps about maybe two miles above Robinson Canal. And the Kirchoffs would like to divide up the bachelor and make some lots on the bachelor and a few on the land side. They realize the land side area may not sell as well as the, the bayou side part, the bachelor property. And we would like to go ahead and get this approved, minor subdivision approved. We have letters from the different utility companies saying they can serve these lots. And we are shy of a fire hydrant to cover the two top lots, or the four top lots, the ones on the northern side. But we do have a receipt where the, the fire hydrants have been paid for, and we'd like to see about getting a, a conditional approval subject to us not asking Becky to sign our map until after the hydrant's installed. And we'd like to see if we can get this approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kenneth. We'll open it to the public. Going once, public on this matter. Twice, public. Three times, public. I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, I have a second by Mr. Bulgard, all approved, aye. All oppose, nay. So motion passes, close to the public. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a minor subdivision process D to create nine lots for use as campsites. The overall lot layout and configuration meet Parish subdivision regulation standards, except that lots 1, 2, 7, and 8 are all greater than the 250-foot minimum from the nearest existing hydrant. The applicant has provided staff with paid invoice and backup documentation for the installation of the proposed hydrant. Municipal addresses need to be depicted on the plat, and not all utility letters have been submitted. Staff recommends approval on the following conditions: that the new hydrant is installed and confirmation sent to staff. The location of the new hydrant and the municipal addresses are depicted on the plat and supplemental of all utility letters.
Okay, thank you, administration. Mr. Bulgard first?
Yes. I was curious on what was the proposed sewage drainage plan for the ones not on the bayou side? Is there a ditch there? I don't, I don't think there's sewage. It's just marshy area that flows out into a lake in the back. All of the leftover property is, the large tract in the rear is, I think, 99% water. Well, so it's all still pending Board of Health approval as far as the sewer system? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mister Thibodeau.
Yeah, just to ask, follow up on that question, uh, yeah, what is it, mechanical treatment plants of probably?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Thibodeau. Um, another comment or a motion, please? I have a motion by Mister Rogers and a second by Mister Falk, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you much.
Yes, sir. G three, lot three, A three, B six, A, and seven, A, uh blocks ten to the city of Homer.
Yes, Ken Rembert uh representing uh this project. Um, this is a a redivision of lot lines uh right here on Good Street. About maybe a block uh south of the Court Square. Um, the uh owner has four lots on these three lots plus a little bit of the fourth lot. And we're trying to rearrange the property lines so they'll fit between the buildings that are there. They're in the process of repairing a lot of these homes and uh one is repaired and ready for moving in, the others I think are under, under repair. Um, but we're trying to fit lots, you know, new lot lines between the buildings. And we'd uh, they're, you know, they're all being served uh with, with utilities at this time and we, everything's within limits of a fire hydrant, less than two fifty. And we would like to see about uh getting these uh lot lines approved. They're somewhat smaller than the normal lot line, so we're asking for a variance on that lot size. Um, some of them like fifty-six hundred square feet, I think they're all fifty-six hundred and something square feet. Like to see about getting this approved if we could.
Thank you, Mister Kenneth. We'll open it up to the public, going once public. Two times public. Three times public. I have a motion by Mister Falk, a second by Mister Rogers, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Close to public. Administration?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, this is minor subdivision process D to create four lots for residential use. Uh, each of the proposed lots already has an existing home present, the homes are in the process of being re- renovated and repaired. The proposed lot configuration and layout meet parish subdivision regulation standards as well as zoning, except for the size requirement. And they did submit a variance request. All utility letters have been submitted. Staff recommends approval of the variance request and approval of this minor subdivision.
Thank you, Administration. Uh, Mister Bogard?
Yes, uh, what is the uh plan as far as the parking there, existing homes there, do they do they have enough space for parking on the side or is it to park on the street?
Well, I don't see where we've picked up too many uh driveways other than one on the upper end. I, I know there's one at the, the upper lot. I don't think the uh, the uh have too many driveways there presently.
So it's, it's, it's mainly road park, well, there, there we go, that's one.
Yeah, that's the, the most northerly one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, most of the parking for these are on-street parking.
And that's the way it was? Okay, thank you.
Mister Thibodeau?
Yeah, I, I just wondering, you know, the engineer or Mister Rembert mentioned the variance request and now the, the, the parking issue has been brought up by this commissioner and I didn't see any of that on the director's letters. Don't you think some of that should have been addressed?
I didn't think about the parking side of it, cuz it, it, it's kind of been that way for so long, I mean, the, the having the, drawing these lot lines isn't gonna really make much of a difference as far as driveways goes, cuz there really aren't any.
But I didn't, I didn't see the variance on your letter here.
Well, I, I missed that, that's why. Added it on the fly.
Okay. Alright, I'm done, thank you.
I have a motion by Mister Bogard and a second by Mister Falk, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
G four, West Manchester subdivision, addendum number two.
Good evening, Jean Milford, Milford Associates, representing Tri-State Land Company for West Manchester Subdivision, addendum number two, engineering. And I know it's out of order, cuz we did, you know, addendum three last quarter, but we're done in two.
Alright. Let's go to public in this matter. Going once public. Going twice public. Three times public. Have a motion by Mister Rogers. Uh, second by Mister Bogard, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Close to public. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Joan first, Mister Administration.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Joan.
The Engineering Division of Terrebonne Parish Department of Public Works has reviewed the plans and calculations for West Manchester Addendum two. The plans and calculations fail to comply with parish ordinances and subdivision regulations in the following areas. Does not conform to the SDDM. The latest CPO one standard plans need to be provided, roadside ditches exceed maximum depth of three foot, six inches. Approval letter should be provided from the following utilities, waterworks, gas utility, electric utility, Department of Health and Hospitals for water and sewer. Approval from TPCG utilities for streetlight should be provided and a benchmark is required.
Thank you, Joan. Um, Mister Administration, do you wanna make a comment first before I go to Commissioners? You good?
Our recommendation is approval on the condition that they agree, agree to comply with the engineering.
Okay. Mister Thibodeau, did you wanna say something?
I got a question, how, how do you, how do you cure this, the, the deep ditch, you gonna bring in some dump truck?
Uh, no, sir, it, it's already been cured, they just haven't had a chance to re-review the recent. Basically, um, what we did is we adjusted the grading on the front lot lines. Yes, sir. As we ended up, we did the same, I had one contouring grading line on one lot corner that exceeded, I adjusted that one already. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or uh a motion, please? I have a motion by Mister Falk and a second by Mister Rogers, all approve, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes.
Thank you.
Staff reports, discussion and possible action regarding the ratification of twenty twenty-two HTRPC annual report.
So, um, I did complete the annual report, but what I would suggest you all do and, and um, we can, let me pull the staff report section out here, but I mean, I would ask that you, you all review it and then at the next meeting, ratify it, I mean, you're just getting it, so.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted to thank Becky for her help on putting this together.
Thank you, Becky. Looking for, is that, is, is that it on that, Chris? Is that, is that it on that?
Possible action, you, you know, you could just at next month's meeting, you don't really have to do anything tonight.
Can I ask one, two, the two questions before next week, next month? One, one question for next month.
Sure.
We, I noticed we have uh no master plan and we've approved some large lot and subdivision and stuff, so what is it, we're not necessarily asking developers for a plan these days and or, or you just hadn't seen the need to do that over the last twelve months.
Well, most of what we've had has been, we've had addendums, but they've been part of larger master plans, I think.
That pre-existed already?
Yeah. I think there was the one out there off of. Yeah. Um, I can't remember the name of the one. Oh, well, Imperial Landing. Imperial Landing was a master plan. Yeah, we have had a few master plans.
When we revisit, we just don't report it as such on the twenty-two.
Adley Oaks had a master plan. So we've had a few, but these addendums we've been seeing lately in the past twelve months or so have all been part of larger master plans. I, I thought when you were saying ma- at first, you were talking about the comprehensive master plan that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, we're looking for a uh, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve administrative approvals out of one through six.
I have a motion.
They're gonna, I give them till next month to, yeah.
I have a motion by Mister Falk and a second by Mister Rogers. All approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. For now.
We're well past March.
We good?
I'm okay, if, if y'all are okay, reviewing the report till next month.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Thank you, Derek. Um, Committee Report, Subdivision Regulations Review Committee, did y'all get a chance to meet?
Actually, yes, so uh, we met last week, um, and again, the main topic of conversation was the rear lot drainage and I was able to get additional information from the developer of a particular subdivision in city of Thibodeau. Um, basically what they did was on some lots, not all of them, but on some blocks, they installed what amounts to a six foot wide concrete swale. Um, that the high point would be, say, in the middle of the block, this is where you would have uh lots with the rear property lines facing each other. Um, so they, they dropped in a six foot concrete swell. And in some instances, they drain to a catch basin at either end. And then those instances, the catch basin area is incorporated into the public drainage servitude. But the concrete swale between the lots is kept in a private servitude. Now, in talking with the developer, he said they had not had an issue with um property owners building out over that concrete swell with their fences. And I went and looked at them myself, I mean, you can look down and it's just a line of fences on either side. Now, it's in a ten foot private drainage servitude, so five foot on one side, five foot on the property line on the other, so the property line's the center line of the swale.
Sure.
Um, being that it's a private servitude, the city is not responsible for maintenance of it. I talked to the city of Thibodeau's Public Works, they don't go out there, I talked to the developer. It's the homeowners who are doing it. Now, whether they're all doing behind their house or maybe there's a handful on the block that's just sort of doing it because it's everybody's benefit, including their own. That seems to be, according to the developer, what's happening out there. The lot's still designed to drain back to front, so they're not coming, they wouldn't be coming to the planning commission asking for a variance or sorry, an exception from that. The swale is intended to be uh just in the event of some incidental runoff as time goes on. Uh, it just gives the property owners a place to direct water, so they don't have water standing in their rear yards like we see or have a lot of, uh, get a lot of calls and, and comments about. Um, it's not something that the city requires, it was that developer did it on their own. They just felt that the benefits of it, you know, were, were good for their customers and the people that live there, um. So we, they've sent us a copy of the plans and the cross-sections and I've sent that out to the committee and you know, we'll take a look at it. Spoken with engineering a bit about it, but we're gonna talk about some more.
So you said the elevation is still draining from the back to the front, correct?
Correct, so when, so when the subdivision's approved by you, you all, like if somebody were to do that here, they would still come in asking for the, showing the, the drainage as being back to front, it's just that swale is back there as a as a backup.
Right, I was wondering, you know, in the hard rains we've had recently, how well i- it held up, I mean, um, I guess we'd almost have to get some feedback from some in the neighborhood just to see if they had, you know, how, how it worked out.
Well, um, you know, we're gonna go uh with engineering and, and look at it as well, but you know, when I looked at it, the um, there's a, a few spots where the expansion joints are, where you had weeds or grass growing up through. So there is the potential for some dirt and other debris to get hung up there. But, I mean, out of all of it, that, that was very few places that I see that and and we're talking about subdivisions that were developed in the mid to late nineties, early two thousands, so they've been there a while.
That was my next question is, how long has that particular drainage been there, how effective has it been since it's been there, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're not, the developer didn't have any um bad things to say about it.
Yeah, I know, I, I personally seen it, I, I, I look, I went and checked it out myself, I mean, I think it's great, um. Okay, Mister Rogers is first.
Is that, with development in Thibodeau, you speaking about, is that that one on three oh eight north of Thibodeau?
No, it's um, I'm gonna butcher the name.
It's on the backside of Ryansey, it's a newer section of Ryansey.
Because there's one, if you take the bypass around Thibodeau, around the backside. And when you cross, you know, on three oh eight, probably three quarters of a mile up on the right, there's a new development there. And I know somebody lives there and they have, they have the little swale in the back, same, same concept, which seems to work pretty good because it drains.
It does.
Yeah.
It's out well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I, I mean, I really can't see a negative to it, except a little additional cost for concrete and so forth, but in the long run, I think it benefits everyone. Mister Bogard?
Yes, so just for a, a little more clarity to that, um, it would be built at contractor's expense and passed over to the purchasing homeowner, purchasing the property. It is a private servitude. Currently, the pictures that we had seen, even though it's ten foot wide, most are putting their fence at the edge of the cement, leaving the space left over about six foot, which is the width of the cement. Uh, that is the way that I would propose it, rather than uh letting the city have that right away and then having to maintain it. I think that the homeowner could definitely maintain a flat piece of cement and it's in their own um, interest to uh keep it flowing properly.
Absolutely.
So, uh, so anyway, yes, that whole servitude is a private servitude.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's um, could fix something that we've been fighting on this committee for quite some time now, um. It's backyard drainage, constantly, we get more complaints on that than probably anything else. So, awesome, that's great guys. Alright, oh. Commissioner comments? Alright, Chairman, no comments, public comment? Yep, yes, sir. Mister Bogard?
Yes, I'd like to uh get a follow-up information, if there is any, on the um the topic that we had previously spoke about, where the, y'all had went around from different parts of the parish, about the funding and uh, and then how the committees were gonna be talking about uh, a game plan for the parish and the spending of those funds, is there any updated information on that?
The, the, the uh series of meetings that we did around the parish in the fall last year?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was part of our long-term recovery plan process, um. That plan, the, and final version of the internal draft is near completion. So once we have that, we're gonna be putting it out to all the stakeholder groups, like you all, um, uh, the public for comment. You know, ultimately, it's gotta be approved and adopted by the parish council. Um, but that'll be this summer, all that's happening, as well, same with the Main Street Corridor Master Plan. Um, also tracking up at the same timeframe, and that, actually, both of those are in the annual report, but um um, part of what we heard, I mean, just to touch on some of the main things, of course, housing was at the top of a lot of lists in a lot of the communities, so that's something that is being addressed. Um, both, both in the long-term recovery plan and the Main Street Master Plan. Um, housing is one of the major recommendations that uh, is coming out and that, we need to get people down residential downtown, but we also need, you know, affordable residential downtown, mixed income, um, uh, same parish-wide. You know, we have a major shortage of affordable housing, rental in particular, so there's a focus on that.
Insurance, low in insurance would help with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, there, the parish is, you know, uh, working with the State Attorney General's Office, other parishers. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, there the parish is, you know, working with the state attorney general's office, other parishers, parishes, organizations and other states regarding risk rating two point oh and and pending litigation there. So that hopefully.
Hopefully helps.
Will help. But those two plans will also be, as well as the hazard mitigation plan, will all be appendices to the comprehensive master plan update, which is what you guys are going to be leading, you know, on. So it's important to get your input on those other plans because they will, you know, make up part of the comp plan, that's where we're going next.
And is some of that also encompassing our recommendation for parish-wide sewage?
Yes.
Yeah, as the hazard stuff.
Yeah, that, so far, it sounds like the best funding source for that is probably community development, block grant, disaster recovery money. And we have certainly, I mean, the the resolution that you all put out to administration and the council, you know, we turned into the consultant team who's heading that. And that's, they're using that as part of the project application that we're making to FEMA for that project. And as a matter of fact, we have a meeting Tuesday, I think, with the state to go over all of our applications for that 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 allocation of funding and the sewer system expansion is one of them.
So we ought to be seeing something like July, something, you said summer?
Yeah.
Couple more months?
June, July.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yep, thank you for the update, Mr. Rogers.
I I do appreciate the fact, you know, about the affordable housing and so forth, but like you mentioned, if we can't get a grip on insurance, homeowners insurance and flood insurance, affordable housing won't mean anything. That was a recent meeting that was just held in the last six weeks where an an oilfield executive made the statement that if Louisiana doesn't get a grip on its insurance problems, that ninety-five percent of his workforce offshore lives south of I ten, they're not going to be able to afford to live here, to work here. So if, you know, we can make things as cheap as possible, if we can't afford the the insurance, I mean, I just got my, I just got my renewal and it's nothing purty. But God forbid people trying to make home loans right now because their their insurance is going to be more expensive than their loan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, or or are there any plans on how we replace the five hundred and seventeen units of public housing that we lost to Inada that you know of?
Well, I know Kelly Cunningham with Housing and Human Services is working with several nonprofits using monies from the not American Rescue Plan, I think it's the hometown revitalization. But they're looking to build ninety duplexes in the Parkwood Place subdivision. Now, those will be eligible, there's not, I mean, they're open for those who qualify, right? But I think the focus would be to get those folks, in particular, the ones who were at the high-rise to find suitable housing for them. There are other, that's ninety is is really only, I think, two streets in Parkwood subdivision, there's still a whole lot more space out there to do more. And we're going to keep working with Kelly and her team. There's also other groups that are coming in, looking at where we have blighted properties. And if we can work with those nonprofits to develop a revitalization or reconstruction plan for those blighted properties. So basically, you use the the money to tear down the blighted property, but you have a program in place to build back on that same property. And you partner with the nonprofits to do that, so that's one of the plans. You know, unfortunately, you know, Restore LA is is working to improve their program, that's the state's reconstruction program. They have recently announced a new program for landlords, so if there's anybody out there who has rental property that they're looking to repair or reconstruct, you know, please contact the state, restore.la.gov. Let's see, and then, I mean, lastly, there's vouchers, you know, that are still, people are still eligible to to receive vouchers for for housing. Unfortunately, there's just not a whole lot of how available housing stock in Terrebonne to use those vouchers for. But now, I'm also told from Kelly that city of Thibodeau and La Fouch Parish is also opening up new vouchers for their housing and Terrebonne residents are eligible for it.
But you mentioned the high-rise, what's the latest with that, is that going to be?
I know that the Housing Authority is still waiting on the final determination of their environmental review, but it's my understanding that they're going to be demolishing that structure now, what their plan is to for the redevelopment of that property. I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, that'll be a heck of an implosion to look at, obviously, that community is so compact.
Yeah, it's not going to be one of those Las Vegas, you know, firing the dynamite, it's going to be one of those picket off night, very carefully.
Plucking a little bit at a time.
Yeah.
Takes forever.
Yeah.
Be a slow process.
I was going to ask you, was the Housing Authority involved in communication or conversation with Kelly as y'all, as she and the nonprofits are working on redevelopment? I I just have one other question, you know, you may know that Louisiana Housing Corporation held a seminar here at Dumas talking about money and the new program they had, new development was excluded, and I was just wondering if you know why that happened?
No, I don't, I have to check into that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Okay, any more public comments, I think everyone has left the building, and I need a motion to adjourn.